All right, good evening. Thank you for being patient with us. If we could please rise to the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. All right, we're going to go right into administrative reports. Dr. Cesar.
All right, good evening. Great to see everyone. I will be attending the Helfe Hilton Coalition Meeting on January 30th. That's Thursday of this week at 6:00 PM. That is going to be in the Ingram Room at 59 Henry Street. Just as you may remember, there was an organization within our community called HP Dice, and that was started and carried out by some community members who had dealt with addiction in their family. And it was working very well, and we had partnered with them to continue to educate our students and have that community partnership, and that ended abruptly several years ago. So now there's a new community member who seems, at least from initial interaction, has a solid background in drug and alcohol counseling and training. And she is looking to start, I believe she's already started the Helfe Hilton Coalition. And it's an informational meeting, and I'm going to be headed to the meeting with several other administrators just to learn how we can partner and what we can do and what we can't do and all that good stuff. But I think it's a great opportunity to see what this group is doing to help fight drug addiction. This Saturday, the executive team will attend the Monroe County School Boards Association Legislative Breakfast. It's a great opportunity to engage in discussion about important issues impacting our schools and especially our upcoming budget. Within that budget proposal, as you know, there's some good news and there's some lukewarm news. There'll be some things that we have to work around and learn about. So that's really important, and we're making sure that we get our points across to our legislature. Also want to thank everyone who has contributed to the budget process so far. The business office, all the different stakeholders who participate in budget development. We continue to meet, and we know that this year's budget is going to be tighter than it's been in recent years. Last few years, we've been able to add some programs and some really great things for kids. And we're not finished, we're going to learn more about it tonight. We've got more work to do, the government has more work to do. But just being in the mindset of being very thoughtful there. Human Resources is working on several plans as well so that we can make sure we can present a balanced budget to the community that's responsible and also provides a great education for our students. Big congratulations to our boys swim team for winning their third consecutive Monroe County championship. We'll call them the Kansas City Chiefs of varsity swimming. Sorry, bad amount too soon. All right, and then tomorrow there'll be no school for students and 10-month employees in recognition of Lunar New Year. So two years ago, New York State began officially recognizing this holiday. It's a state holiday. When this holiday falls on the weekend, we don't have school off, but when it falls during the week, we do have school off. Interesting, I've received a couple of phone calls and emails about some other religious holidays and when would the school district be choosing to honor those. So I've really tried to help educate folks that at this point, this is a state mandate. Different holidays, Dua Lee and Eid have been brought up in conversation. The Jewish population also has talked about some of the holidays they celebrate as far as would we be having school off. I reminded a few folks that at any point in time, a child has the right, especially with their parents' support, to miss school for a religious recognition of a holiday. So I think that this was well-intended from our government. I think with a lot of well-intended things, we start to see some things that we didn't think about. So, you know, as we develop the calendars for future years, I don't know when that will happen, but we may be looking at working away from February break because the expectation will still be to have 180 days between the months of September and June. So it's not going to happen tomorrow, but it's something to think about as these decisions are made for us at the state level. So I hope everybody that recognized that holiday has that opportunity to do so, and I hope folks enjoy the day that they have off for that. So that's everything that I have for you, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, Ms. Bellini?
Two updates for you from the Office of Instruction. Over the past two days, the Office of Instruction and building principals have engaged in a series of classroom visits, specifically looking at the literacy program K through six. We've been walking the buildings with Jan Berkins, who is one of the authors of Shifting the Balance. We've observed 44 different classrooms over K six in the last two days, all in literacy instruction. Gave really valuable insight for us into our literacy practices, so writing vocabulary, small reading instruction, read alouds, et cetera. Tomorrow, 12-month employees will be here, so our elementary assistant principals and principals. Karen Swillman and I will convene a debriefing session with Jan from 8:00 to 2:00 where we will talk about examining the trends that we observed over the course of the two days, celebrating our successes, and then making some plans for continuous improvement. These activities are all part of our ongoing reading roadmap that we have been working through the last year and a half. Specifically, we worked a great deal with Jan Berkins and Karen Gates, the authors of Shifting the Balance. They brought some really great expertise and perspective into our work here and have really been instrumental in our decision-making moving forward. So really excited to continue integrating evidence-based, research-based practices in our reading instruction and seeing how that will help improve things for our staff and for our students, most importantly. And another update is on the work at 7:12 on grading. Due to the recent school closure last week, unfortunately, we had to reschedule our grading ad hoc committee meeting that was originally planned for the 22nd. Instead, that meeting will now take place on February 12th. When we do reconvene the ad hoc committee for grading, we will be taking a look at the staff, the family, and the student survey that was administered late November, early December. Today, both Morgan Williams and the high school conducted their third of three common staff meetings around grading practices. They engaged with an article and two videos discussing how certain grading practices align, or how well they align, I should say, with what we discovered was the front-runner for all things, both in all of our surveys, the most important thing that creates should be reported is academic achievement. And that was clear through all of our surveys. So we took a look at some grading practices that best align with that philosophy. And we'll continue to support this important work during the March Superintendent's Conference today, and I'll give you some more clear details on exactly what that will look like as we get closer. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, next up, Mr. Dale.
So on Friday, I sent you a PowerPoint. You should have a copy in front of you. My administrative report tonight, I just thought we'd walk through a bit. I heard some comments of stuff to see on my phone. It was a little tricky to see through, so I did want to make sure that you had a paper copy of it. So this is the third survey for new staff members, third year of the done the staff, new staff survey. Again, on slide two, we talked about, you know, why and what are we doing. I think the key is also to listen to our staff, but then more importantly for me is the follow-up that we listen to our staff and then we actually take action on the steps necessary. So we've done quite a bit of work on onboarding. We've done quite a bit of work on making sure people have the supplies, making sure that people are comfortable in the district, and measures a little bit of culture. On slide three, one of the things I think you'll see is that in '23, '24, and '25, we did exact numbers of employees take the survey, 50 employees, which to me is a very good number and a completion rate, so in a consistent number. So it was sent to every new employee. Last year, we went back just a little bit, around June 19th, so people that will be onboarding June 19th, all the way through January 1st, and that's going to be used if anybody did we hire from there. As you might remember, we did quite a few hiring of teachers in February and March because our timelines are moving up because the process is so competitive. So I did want to just call your attention to the number of employees coming, you know, overall. The next slide you'll see is how would you rate your experience overall as an employee? I was really very pleased over the past three years to see that growth. The .03 difference, you know, wasn't really statistically relevant. I'm okay, I don't want to see a decrease, as as you can imagine, I'm pretty competitive that way. But overall, very pleased with the trend that we've seen, with people saying that they're having a very positive experience. And as you can remember, in '22, '23, we're coming off some very tough times. We've had a couple of tricky incidents. And then on the next slide, you'll see is how do you rate your overall onboarding experience? This actually had great feedback for us. The comments were incredibly helpful. So although the number went down a little bit, it was the feedback that was helpful. So interesting, you might note that some of the staff that we hire aides in particular, teacher aides don't start the day before school. So making sure that we offer them an onboarding experience and an opportunity to get used to the Hilton Way and the different buildings that they serve and the students they serve. There were some specific comments that led me to believe that people that started not on that first day school, and also anybody that was hired, some people indicated in their comment, hey, I started in October as an aide, or I started in November as an aide, and I felt like I missed some of the onboarding piece. So that was great feedback for us. So we're talking internally about how to do some training, how to offering an October onboarding training and experience so that everybody gets a consistent experience. So I was, again, for me, although I'm looking for a positive trend, I want to learn and improve because that's what this is about. This is not about my feelings, this is about our feelings. How well do your day-to-day responsibilities align with your job expectations? Again, pretty consistent response, but again, for me, the feedback was really important. Pieces of feedback that we heard that were trends were the fact that the people that service our most complex students are individuals that need more training. It felt like, hey, in the summer, when we did an interview, it didn't say this might happen. And although, right, we can't always predict what will happen with every student in every scenario, I think that was great feedback. That goes in line with that training piece. One person asked for a shadow day, which I thought was really, really interesting. Could they commit a shadow before they accept the position? Right, that might be something that we have to think about because as these positions become more and more difficult to fill, we want the best people on them. And again, I was very open to the feedback. On the next slide, you will see that are you comfortable speaking with your supervisor about your questions? This is a really, this is a trend I am very proud of. For me, this is a trend that also reflects the shifts in our culture of working with our administrative team. And so I was, again, very pleased because that's something that I want to see up there in the future. And I was pleased with that result. That's something to keep an eye on. Do you have the necessary materials and supplies to do your job? As you can remember, in our first year, '23, we heard from individuals that did not feel like they had the materials. They felt like they were going out and buying their own materials. So this also encompasses all of our cleaners. This encompasses our aides, our assistants, our teachers, and some of our coordinators. So again, thrilled about the trend, but also the feedback. And then I shared, the next two slides are pieces and quotes right from the survey, what I call things to grow on from the survey, things that we can continue to improve. I want to call your attention to the, under the bullet, under continued technology support, where it says, the only thing that comes to mind is technology without filling out our timesheet in Excel for the first time or two. Remember when I talked to you about moving to frontline's time and attendance module? This is something that will make it so much easier, no matter what platform you're using. Because when I try to talk to someone and they're like, hey, do you have a Samsung? Or I'm on the Apple 14, or I'm, I don't even know what version I have. But it is different for everybody's viewing. So this is something that I think we'll be able to streamline. And then the other piece was interesting was there were a couple of comments around having their computer and their accounts ready or ahead of time. This is, for me, is a cost-benefit analysis. When we're hiring aides and assistants and we want them in our classrooms, many of these individuals are substitutes already, so we may not have their computer ready on the day before their starting, but we want our classrooms covered. So for me, this was a cost-benefit analysis of what we should be looking at. Do we want coverage in our classrooms, or do we want their computer ready? Or do we say, and we need to be more specific, and I can own this, is, hey, you're going to start tomorrow, but just know your computer's not going to be ready tomorrow. We're going to work with the technology department. And again, I may be just hearing that comfort level of, we know that this is an issue, and just reinforcing it is important. So, but that class coverage issue is, for me, a primary concern more than we'll get your accounts, you know, you should have had your accounts already. It does take time for our technology department to prepare a laptop or prepare Chromebook, have the necessary accounts already set up and ready. So that was one piece. I was thrilled about the things to go on in the final slide. I think that if you read those, take a minute just to read those individual comments, and I know that you guys read it on Friday, but I think I want to give a shout-out on the first bullet to the Office of Instruction. The training that we did with new teachers, and we've already planned, and we already have a date for all of the teachers that we hired this year, we will do a training in the first part of July where they will come in, they will get their badge, they'll get their laptop, they'll have their account set up. Last year, some of the PCs came, so that was very helpful. The people could find their curriculum, be working all summer. That meant their blue classroom was set up. So again, that training was very well appreciated. And again, there were multiple comments, but I thought that was a good one. The second comment, to me, reflected feelings. There's a shift of feelings in the district from new employees and current employees. Feelings matter, right, because we compete for people. It's not about whether we pay them a quarter more or 50 cents more. It's whether they enjoy coming to work and who do they like, who do they enjoy working with. So the third bullet, again, to me, was just so important that they feel like anyone in this building is a success. I am no more important than anyone in this district. I'm glad they felt like, when they said top-down, that they feel comfortable approaching us, and that was a great message. And then lastly, there's no better comment than the Hilton experience and culture are what drew me here. I'm very happy to be a partner. Hilton is a place where I envisioned opening a long-term career and eventually retiring. This is my hope. What a great, what a great comment. It was really nice to hear that they're having that positive experience. And again, I gave credit to the administrative team, the HR office, Debbie, Wendy, Brittany, and many are just outstanding with new employees. They take their time with them, they make sure that they have what they need. They follow through with anything, all of the requests and processes that it takes to get a person up and running on that first day. So always room to grow, but I was overall pleased among to make sure you had the latest update. I have shared this with union leadership. They'll be sharing it with their executive boards because I think it's important that our staff recognizes that we're still assessing how we are doing, improving what we are doing. So, and I can answer any questions if they're...
The teachers, you did change their name?
They are changing their name from the HCSTA to the HEA, Hilton Educators Association, and that will go, that will be official, I think, tomorrow.
What month did that change?
I think that some individuals within their association are not teachers. There are school counselors, there are psychologists, and others in there, so they are looking to be more inclusive of all of the educators in their association. But if you have any other questions, I'm happy.
Did you get any initial, please, I just wanted to share the survey with the teacher association. I just wanted to share it with other unions as well.
Yep.
Did you get any initial feedback from any of the unions regarding the survey results?
Not yet. Last year, they were very pleased. They were very appreciative that we would even share the results with them. That type of transparency, for me, is equally as important as doing the survey and working with the administrative team to make those improvements.
Thanks.
Yep. Next up, Mr. Dice.
So good evening. For the second year in a row, we hosted a community budget forum. This past, this year, the event took place last Tuesday. The good news is we tripled our attendance. We went from one to three. So, you know, that was, I guess, positive. The bad news is we only had three people that attended. So, but in all sincerity, it was very interactive. We hit on a whole bunch of different topics, from budget development to some unfunded mandates, a lot of discussion about electric buses and, you know, what we have to do in order to get ready for that mandate. So overall, it was good. I want to thank Jim. He did a great job. He was kind of the lead presenter. We did kind of piggyback off each other, and I chimed in several times. But overall, we thought it was very successful. We are glad to interact with the three community members that did show up. Also just want to mention it is W-2 season, so we have until January 31st to get those all out to employees and filed with the IRS. All of our W-2s, which there were 1,328 this year, have been sent to employees along with all their 1095 forms. So the 1095 forms are what goes out for health insurance. There's also a box on the W-2, which is the employer-employee share of health insurance. That's always the part that takes us longest to get through. So again, a big thank you to Jim for all his work on that. We've partnered with HR, so Wendy Radford was a huge help for us. And Josh Henness from the technology side in getting this out. You know, when you think about some of the nuances with delivering all of those W-2s, which we do electronically, and in the day of cybersecurity, we're now sending out an email, before the email comes out to them, to notify them of the availability of their W-2 and tax forms to let them know that, hey, you're going to be getting this. It's not a phishing attempt. It is going to be coming out and just be on the lookout for it. So Josh does all that behind-the-scenes work in order to make that a success for us. So very pleased with where we are in the teamwork that goes on to get those out. Those are the only two updates I have right today.
Yeah, I had to go into WICAP today and authorize that I wanted it sent to me electronically.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Okay, we don't have any public comments, and that brings us right back to Mr. Dice.
All right, so we are heading into the budget season. So this definitely is a busy time of the year for the business office. As Casey said, we are having constant communications, not only at our Monday meetings, but throughout the week, on just all things that are happening from a budget perspective, both in developing our Hilton budget as well as the outcomes that are coming out from New York State. So the rollover budget, which we are now calling rollover budget plus. So I think last year, we talked about we've been adding a lot on our debt service in preparation for our long-term borrowings related to capital project buses, as well as what we need to fill out for our property tax cap. This year, and is another change that has been added, is we're getting more and more information from BOSI. So when we get to that, I'll point that out and share that with you. But the rollover budget, in essence, is a snapshot in time. So it's like you take a picture of where your budget is. You do apply some updates to there, so right now, we're in labor peace, meaning we have all of our contracts settled. So we know what increases to expect for each one of our bargaining groups, but we're keeping the same number of staffing. We're not eliminating any programs at this point in time. That's all stuff that happens as we go through the budget process. We do take into account some of the changes in benefits. So if we know the ERS and TRS rate, which we do get notified of what those rates are, they're typically a range, we go to the high part of that range, and then as that becomes final, we'll adjust that as we move through the process as well. This year's big change was related to healthcare, and I'll get into that when we talk about healthcare. So we're going to talk about some of the assumptions that go into the rollover budget and our budgeting in general. I'll give you the executive budget summary, which is kind of a high-level book from the major components of the budget. You're going to get presentations on all of these throughout the budget development process, but you'll kind of get a snapshot of where we are right now, and then I'll open it up to any questions or comments as we go. So here are some of the assumptions that we made. So all of our salaries, the average increase is about 3.5%. Depending on the bargaining unit, you know, we might have some at 3.6, we might have some at 3.5. We might have, this also takes into account claim forms. All the different types of salary they have, on average, we're going up 3.5% overall. The big change, again, is in health insurance. It's always a pressure on our budgets. It's a driving force. It's a big increase this year. It's going up 14.4%. Last couple of years, we were in at least the single digits. Still high, but obviously, we'd like to remain there. We are part of a healthcare consortium in Monroe County, so all of the districts in Monroe County participate in this consortium. It is much better than the rate increases that you're going to experience if you're not part of that consortium, meaning if you're in the general population, so to speak. You'll have even higher increases in health insurance. So there's a lot of factors in what goes into that, especially the work that we do in contract negotiations and working with HR and the plans that are offered, in lower-cost plans, both. Hopefully, that's going to save money for the employees as well as the districts such as our Hided Up. For our retirement system, we have the employees' retirement system, which are all our non-certified staff members. That rate is increasing by 1.7 percentage points. It's going from 17.8 up to 19.5. So that is a pretty significant increase for our employees' retirement system. It is something that we'll obviously keep an eye on as that one is going up. However, the good news, the teacher retirement system is showing a decrease, at least initially, where the rate on the high end is going to be at 10%, which was down from the 10.25% from the year before. The other benefits, the one that I at least want to touch base on is our workers' compensation. We've done really well as part of the workers' compensation consortium. Our experience rating has dropped off. We're expecting to see potentially almost $100,000 decrease in our workers' comp. So kudos to the safety committee and the work that they do. We had that meeting earlier today. There's not a lot of trends. There's not a lot of workplace injuries that we're experiencing. So all of those things that we do as a district to improve safety and security and slip and falls and those types of things, training for staff members, protective equipment for our members, all has paid off, and it's showing up in that workers' comp line. As I mentioned, the rollover budget plus, BOSI's. I used to give one number here, like, hey, BOSI's is going up on average 2% or 4%. Last year, I think I started separating it out because we heard special education costs were going to go up at a larger clip. This year, when I met with my counterpart over at BOSI's and we had this conversation, you could see that there's a vast majority of COSRs that are now being reported out on. So many of them are coming in at a 5% increase. BOSI's admin, that's the bright spot, that's coming in at a 0% increase, so that's nice. That's typically where all the retiree health comes from, BOSI, so that's finally caught up. That was kind of spiking the last couple of years, and it was great to see that that was going to go up or remain flat this year. BOSI's special education costs still a concern. On average, they're going up 4.5%. Some are going up over 6%, but on average, about 4.5%. CTE was one that really caught me by surprise. This is our Romoco, so we send quite a few kids to that program. It is a great program, but it's going up 12%. It's roughly about a $200,000 increase to our budget on that one line item for BOSI's at this point in time. BOSI's capital, BOSI's rental are also part of the overall admin budget, and you can see that those are going up 4.9% and 9.9% respectively. So again, much more detail at this point in time than we typically haven't had in the past, but as we continue to work with BOSI's and their understanding some of the needs that the districts have, and again, to avoid surprises as we're going through this, to be able to react and make good decisions, we're getting that information sooner than we have in the past.
So Adam, for the CTE program, do we have a limited, we have a max number of students we can send to that?
We do not. We used to cap it several years ago. It's probably been four or five years now where we have taken that cap away. So we do not have a cap on what that program is. As long as BOSI's has a room in the program, then we can send there. So somebody could say, I want to go to a program, let's just say cosmetology. They could fill up the slots, and then they could say, unfortunately, Hilton, you don't have as many slots as for the number of students that want to take that program. But we do not provide that cap. That would come from BOSI's.
And has there been a kind of explanation for that 12%?
There has.
And more teachers?
Yep, there's a couple of things. So part of it is they're having a hard time hiring teachers in it. They're typically hiring people that are experts in the field, and they're bringing them into education so that they don't have a teaching certificate. So they're paying more in order to get those staff members in. And then the second piece is, you know, Hilton included, but other districts, there's some special education students that want to participate in that Romoco program, and they haven't, they've been saying no. And now we've been pushing back, and now they're having some additional costs associated with having to provide those supports for our special education students that participate in those programs. Again, I want to talk a little bit about our debt service budget. So for '24, '25, we had some temporary financing that we were, related to the $37.2 million project. We were doing a short-term borrowing, which is called a BAN, bond anticipation note, which you can set out for one year or less. You can renew that for up to five years, but we had that in there. We had roughly $600 and some odd thousand dollars in interest that we were going to use in order to borrow that fund to get through that. We did not have to do that borrowing. We had a couple of reasons for that. One, the capital reserve that we had, that $4 million capital reserve, we were able to get through this year using those funds and didn't have to borrow for it. The other issue was really on the state education side. It took them a lot longer to approve our project, which means that we hadn't started as early as we wanted to, which allowed us to have that capital reserve get us through to the end of this year. So you'll see that same line because we are estimating a temporary financing now for that same project in the '25, '26 year. And then, again, for '24, '25, we did have the community vote and pass that new $10 million capital reserve for the next project that we're going to be undertaking as we're already starting to kind of look at that plan for the next capital project. For '25, '26, we also have our principal and interest payments related to our new buses. We did now start incorporating the electric vehicle mandate. So we typically spend about 1.4-ish million on buses next... Next year, we're going up to about 2.2 million. The year after that, we're going to probably be at around 4.5 million in order to meet that mandate. So that's kind of where we are right now. We're using it as placeholders. Obviously, it's still fresh, and things are changing, and we'll adapt to that. But we felt that we had to start ramping that up in order to meet that mandate that starts in '27. Property tax cap, I say this all the time, it's called the 2% property tax. That's how the media portrays it. This is a complex formula that we have to go through in order to calculate that 2%, which never comes out to be 2%. We're still in the process of gathering all the information. We don't have every piece in order to fill this out, but the pieces that we have right now and the estimates that we have in, we're projecting our property tax cap to be at 1.75. It's actually going to be less than that 2% cap, but as I said, it's a complex formula. So some years, it's greater than that. Some years, it's less than that. This year happens to be less than the 2%. And you'll see a history here of kind of all of our key figures dating back to the 2015-'16 year, updated for '25-'26. So the tax-based growth factor, that takes into account new constructions or additions on existing homes. So our increase for that is .46. The allowable levy growth factor, which is where that 2% number comes from, is at 2%. The reason why it's at 2% is because inflation is higher than that. If inflation was lower than that, such as back in the 2021-'22 year, then it would have been capped at the lower amount of inflation or the 2%. So even though inflation this year was 2.95%, we're capped at that 2%. We're still waiting, again, for where we're actually going to come out, but the history shows that our maximum tax cap, we've never looked to exceed that and go up for a supermajority vote. We've either been at or below that property tax cap. And just as a reminder, because it wasn't too far, too long ago, the '23-'24 year, you can see our cap maximum was 5.18%, and at that point in time, we went out with a 0% tax levy. Again, at the time, it was unheard of. There's actually another district that I believe this year is now experiencing the same thing. We did really high increases in some state aid, and they're talking about going out as 0%. We'll see if that happens. But, you know, I'd just like to remind the board and the community of that, that we did have that 0% increase back in '23-'24. So the governor did put out the state of the state, which then followed with the state aid runs that came out. So we do not have the detail on these state aid runs. So that's the part that I'm really interested in, because that will walk us through that formula. Jim and I go through an analysis on that. We work with our special education department. We work with our transportation department. We work with our financial consultants for our building aid to kind of dig through the details on each one of those aid categories to determine if the information that the state has provided to us matches our reality. There could be timing issues associated with it. There could be plans that we have that the state's not aware of yet. That is especially the case for building aid or special education. So we're going to go through all of that analysis on there. Now, the good news is our foundation aid, which I was expecting to be at 0%, the governor did reinstate the due minimum, which was nice to see. Last year, there was supposed to be a due minimum of 3%. She stripped that out. This year, in her budget, she does have a 2% due minimum on there, which was nice. In foundation aid, which is our largest aid category and our least restrictive aid category. We came in slightly higher than that, which means even with the formula running as it is now, being fully funded, we still would have saw a small increase had we not had that 2% due minimum. So that was a pleasant surprise, because as you know, our enrollment isn't necessarily going up. We've kind of are now on a downward trend on that. But the needs of our students and the populations of people that we're serving are going up, which I think is what's leading to that. Again, I don't have the details, so this is just me kind of drawing some conclusions based on what I know. As I get into the detail, I'll be able to kind of confirm or deny, you know, that statement. Universal pre-K is our grant funding, so you can see the cost in there. It's going up to that 1.1 million. BOSI's aid, I want to point this out, because this is going up $1.1 million. Now, if you remember, I talked about some of the capital project work that we shifted from the capital project to BOSI's. It was related to all of the Phase 3 of our 32 quarter-million-dollar project, all of the security updates we had for the doors and entrance ways and things of that. So we were able to run that through BOSI's, which generated BOSI's aid. It's going to be a one-time aid. So if we use that for recurring costs, we're going to be in a world of hurt next year. So for this presentation, I backed out just under $1 million of that BOSI's aid because it's a one-time aid. So that's something that we're still talking about strategically and how we're going to handle that. Is there another one-time aid, or a one-time expense piece that we could use for that? Do we want to allocate some of that to get us through this year? And then we'll have to experience that problem, you know, a year from now when we're developing the '26-'27 budget. So we're looking strategically on how we're going to handle that. But that is something that we expected. Shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. High costs and private access costs are both related to special education. We do have some bumps in that. I am working with special ed, and once the detail comes out of a better understanding if we're going to be able to recognize all of that aid increase, if we're going to get more than what we think, because we have additional students that maybe they don't know about yet. So, again, that number typically will change. Our hardware and tech, software library, and textbook aid are all per pupil driven. So you can see those are down slightly, which then goes back to my original statement on foundation aid. Our enrollment is slightly declining, but the population of people that we're serving has higher needs. That's why I think there's weightings associated with that, why we're getting a slight increase based on the formula. And then our building aid, remaining fairly flat, up about $76,000. So when we look at this, all said and done, we're looking at about a $2.5 million increase, remembering that there's going to be changes, and we're going to probably be backing out some of that BOSI's aid associated with that. So not all horrible news from the governor. A couple of nice surprises in there. We'll continue to see how things shake out as they go through their negotiations, and hopefully have an on-time budget so we can incorporate it into our budget process here. This is just a foundation increase. I just, I thought this was interesting. I presented this a couple of years ago. Last year, I did not. But this really shows just foundation aid and where different districts are in the county. So you can see that the first four districts here are all capped at 2%. So that's a 2% due minimum. Where the next district in line, we would have had that slight increase of .33%. And then you can see the range that goes all the way up here. The ones to the far right, where you're seeing those double-digit increases, those are lower wealth districts. So they have lower property values. They have lower income values. So that's what we're, without the detail, that's what we're anticipating is causing them to have those increases. Where we have a little bit more property wealth with the lakefront, and we also have, based on income tax returns file with the state, we have higher incomes in the area. So our combined wealth ratio is what we believe is driving this. We'll find out once the details come out, but I thought that was an interesting slide I wanted to share. Here's the executive budget summary. This is kind of a snapshot where we are right now. You'll see some of the repeat numbers, like that 14.4% health increase, which is causing a $2.5 million increase to our budget. So that puts it in real dollars for you. When you see 14.4%, you might not necessarily say, hey, what's that going to impact on our budget? $2.5 million. I'm going to jump down to a couple of other highlights. The state aid, well, it was up about $2.5 million. I'm only accounting for, at this point in time, $975,000 increase from where we were at our budget last time. So this isn't necessarily the increase from there that we saw, but it's where we were from our budget last time to what I'm looking at for our budget this time. Been a small increase in our pilots. That's what that represents. Here's the 1.75% in the property tax cap. It would generate just over $700,000 in additional levy for us. So with our overall budget, we would be at a deficit for rollover budget time, which we typically are at a deficit every rollover budget, of about $3.2 million. To put that in perspective, a year ago where we were, we were at about 1.8 million. So a little bit higher. We got some work to do in order to get there. Having a lot of conversations. We don't have things like our retirements built into here or changing of programs. So there's going to be a lot that's going to change between now and when we have that final recommended budget in April and ready to go up to the vote in May for the community. I'll open up if there's any questions at this time. All right, this presentation will be out on the website. We'll be posting that out there along with the line item, the rollover budget.
Anything else for Adam? Okay, moving on to old business. So now that we're all here, as a group of seven, we're going to attempt to approve these meeting minutes. So we're going all the way back to November 12th. All in favor of approving the minutes for the November 12th meeting? I think we've got... We've got Stephanie, Teresa, Nancy, and Ed. That's four. And then any extensions? We've got Christine, Kay, Keely, and myself. All right, now we're going to move on, move on to the December minutes. We do have a motion to approve those minutes. Are all favorers of those minutes? So myself, Stephanie, Keely, and Nancy and Ed.
The first, the November, who, who, for, who?
Motion.
Oh, shit.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I motion to approve the November 12th.
Yeah, sorry.
That's fine.
I knew this was going to become clear. So we've got Nancy motioning, Ed seconding.
Four, and then extensions.
So now, moving on to December 10th, a motion to approve the December 10th minutes. Nancy, the second. Ed, all in favor of the December 10th minutes. So Ed, Nancy, Keely, Stephanie, and myself for December.
Any extensions? Thank you.
All right, so now, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So.
Christine seconded by Stephanie. All in favor. Seven oh, exactly. All right. Okay. Four bumper reports. I don't have anything to report.
Nothing for me. I just want to give a quick shout-out. Norwood usually does like kindergarten, like Christmas holidays. This year, they changed it in an effort to be more welcoming and affirming. It's not like a New Year's celebration for families. The Friday, you got back from break. It was amazing. It was so cute. They had like story time with the principal. You got to do a cute craft, and then all the families got to get their picture taken with this cute background, and they're getting it printed for us. It was a really fun event. And I just appreciate all the hard work of them.
So I participated in donating bottles and cans to senior bash on the 19th. It was very gold. I gave that guy a lot of credit for sitting in that U-Haul truck and collecting those bottles and cans. Tomorrow, right, tomorrow's the 29th, there's another bash fundraiser for the senior class. If you order pizza between 11:30 and 9:00 from the juvenile location of the Salty Bread Pizza Company, 10% of each sale will be donated to our senior bash, so I encourage people to purchase if you can. Today, I attended the second half of safety committee as soon as my building dismissed. The 30th, I'm going to go to the planning for legislative committee for Monroe County Board Association in preparation for the legislative breakfast on the 1st at Shadow Lake. And hopefully that will go really well, interacting with our legislators to try and, you know, get some answers, present some position papers, and hopefully secure additional funding for our districts and the county. And I believe that is it. Thank you very much.
I have no report.
I missed the last meeting, so I have been on a bunch of committees for LSS, Tech, Athletics, Central Office, B&amp;G, Quest. Most recently, B&amp;G, who they always knock it out of the park with their dashboard and their five-year planning. I will note that Jim Barrett was there. It was great to have someone from the office listening in on what departments are thinking about and their plans. Everybody is very aware of keeping costs down and being thoughtful with the money that they do have, you know, their per pupil allocation, and, you know, we're encountering interesting prejudices. Legislative breakfast is on Saturday at Shadow Lake. We have a number of administrators and court members attending. This is a good time to educate our local legislators on the issues that all of the Monroe County Public Schools are invested in. Again, this year, they're going to have Student Voice, which is always great. That would be really interesting. Information Exchange for February is on FERC and Metro 2D. A couple of attorneys will be speaking about that, and that's on the 5th. District Operations is the 12th, and it will be the rescheduled budget process foundation aid with Mike Best and the program. That's all.
I also attended the Building and Grounds budget meeting. Mark's leadership, his organization, and the structures and systems that are set up, it's evident that they are very conscious of money spent. They have equipment, life expectancy, and they manage equipment to ensure that they get it the last, the expectancy that they set for it, and if they can, things do come up. But they do an excellent job, great teamwork, and just a thorough job as a team. I'm also attending Saturday. I think it's the Saturday.
Yep.
Not the legislative.
That's it? All right, so we're going to move on to new business. We have the consent portion of the meeting with an addendum. I think that takes us all the way to the end. We've got a motion to approve the consent portion of the meeting. Nancy, the second. First price, any discussion?
I do have a question on the Gibson request. Is that a community member that donated to Merckl Reals, the science will be at?
Yes.
Okay. It's very generous.
Great, all in favor? Seven oh. All right, that brings us to the end. The only thing I'll add is that I believe Theater Club is this weekend. Lincoln Sloan is the...
Well, he's there. We'll see what he's doing.
Theater Club, I think, Friday night, Amy, and Saturday afternoon.
Friday night, Saturday.
So give Lincoln a shout-out. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Keely, Ed, all in favor? Seven oh. Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening, everyone.